All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call the March 24, 2025 meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order. I apologize for us being late. We did meet an executive session at 6:00 PM where we discussed the following items. With regards to litigation matters, three zoning cases, one with regards to the sober house. One is a nonconforming use case. The other one is a variance request. We also discussed two personnel matters. One is regarding an intended retirement, and the other one has to do with the higher potential hiring of an employee. With that being said, Mr. Neese, please call the roll.
Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Ms. Roberts-Laycap. Ms. Channell. Mr. Russo and Mr. Sanfrancesco are unable to be here tonight. Your engineer, manager, and solicitor are here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese. Now we'll move down to section four, which is the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Seeing that we have the police officers here for the Officer of the Year award, I would like to just say that we keep our first responders and our thoughts and prayers, that they continue to be safe as they keep us safe. And we'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now move down to section five, 5.1. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Channell, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Laycap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Section six, public comment for agenda items only. If there's any members of the public who wish to provide any public comment for an agenda item, please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Any members, third and final time, let the record reflect that there is no public comment. We are going to go out of order real quick. I'm going to move down, Tom, if you're ready. The time is real quick. It is 7:14. I will open up the record for section 14, public hearing, for the conditional use of 14 Phillips Lane. I will state on the record that this matter is being continued until April 28th at the Board of Supervisors meeting here at the Township Building. Mr. Sikor, is there anything else I need to add for the record?
Right.
I did date, place, and time. Thank you very much. With that being said, at 7:15, we'll close the record. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Section seven, minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the February 24, 2025 meeting of the Board of Supervisors? Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Laycap, seconded by Supervisor Channell. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 7.2. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the March 10, 2025 meeting?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Channell, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Laycap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We're going to go out of order again. I'm going to move to section 9.2, Police Department Awards. I'll turn it over to Chief Long.
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to be presenting two awards. Our first award tonight is the Walt Wolf Community Partner Award. Here to help me present the award is Walt Wolf. Walt's been a longtime friend and supporter of the Police Department, and nobody's been a bigger supporter of our department than Walt. And in appreciation for his decades of support, we named this award in his honor. This year's award will recognize a business in the community that has been supporting the Police Department and other organizations in Newtown Township. The recipient this year is Cavallo Auto Body. Cavallo Auto Body has been a member of the Newtown Square community for over 20 years. In that time, they've established themselves at the top of the auto body repair industry, and their work is second to none. For many years, Cavallo has been providing paint services to the Police Department for our black and white patrol cars at no cost to the townships. Some of the other organizations that Cavallo has supported in our community are the Newtown Square Fire Company, the Newtown Edgemont Little League, the Markham Newtown Fourth of July Parade, and the Newtown Square in Bloom and Hanging Flower Baskets. Here to accept the award tonight is owner Rick Romano and manager Mike DeFrancesco. Our second award tonight is the Clinton Cunningham Officer of the Year Award. The Officer of the Year Award is named in the memory of Sergeant Clinton Cunningham. Clinton was a dedicated Newtown Township Police Officer who died unexpectedly in 2018. Here to present the award tonight is Kelly Cunningham. Also here tonight are three children, Carrie Lynn, CJ, and Tion. In order to be named the Officer of the Year, a police officer has to meet the following criteria. They have to build community, promote inclusivity, demonstrate leadership qualities, and exemplify mission. The Officer of the Year is determined through a vote by the members of the Police Department. This year, eight officers received nominations for the award. And this year's winner is School Resource Officer Johnny Ettleblut. Some of the reasons, some of the comments that were made by the officers who submitted the nominations were, "Each day, SRO Ettleblut exemplifies our agency's motto, 'Police and community working together,' and goes above and beyond to represent our department with professionalism and pride." Since he became the SRO, I have had countless members of the community stop to tell me how much of a positive impact he is having in the schools. Another officer said, "His professionalism and interactions with the Markham Newtown School District staff and students are exactly what the role of the SRO is all about." Another officer said, "He brings a positive and professional attitude every day to the workplace." He has brought the SRO position to a new level by promoting positive police presence, conducting demonstrations with the students, and he's developed a strong social media presence as the SRO. SRO Ettleblut is someone that every person in the department should model themselves after." Another officer said, "SRO Ettleblut is a highly dedicated and motivated officer who is able to work in tandem with all officers." He is also taking control of the youth aid panel and dedicates his time to the betterment of the department through his work. SRO Ettleblut displays good spirit, dedication, leadership, and dependability in his continued efforts to advance our schools, township, and department. Another officer said, "Working with Johnny is a privilege, and I am fortunate to have been able to improve my policing ability under his direction. He is dependable, and I know I can always reach out to him if I have questions or concerns with anything." Finally, an officer said, "SRO Ettleblut does a really good job at holding all other officers to a high standard when it comes to appearance in uniform and productivity in the street." Those are the reasons why Johnny has been selected as Officer of the Year.
So we'll take a quick recess so everybody can get out who wants to leave, unless you want to stay and see local government in action. Feel free to stay. All right, we are going to reconvene. Thank you, Chief. We'll move. Actually, you know, Arlene, I'm going to have you do your presentation, and then we'll do the resolution. How's that sound? So we'll move up to 9.1, which is the presentation from the Library Department, Arlene Carusa, the Director.
I remember to turn on the mic. Well, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you about the library and National Library Week. I want to also thank you for your continued support, and especially as a director now for 10 years at the Newtown Public Library. I really appreciate your support and the partnership that the library has with the township. The mission of the library is to encourage the joy of reading, the exploration of ideas, and the pursuit of lifelong learning for all. And I really feel like we emphasize this, especially in 2024. I did give you all a report for 2024 today. I encourage you to look through that. There's some good little pieces of data there, but I just want to highlight just a few things. So in 2024, one of the biggest highlights, of course, was our 50th anniversary celebration, which started on the actual date, July 15th, and we had over 600 people here in the library. We did a read-aloud marathon. Leonard led the way on that one. And we also had a ribbon cutting for our new community room, and Leonard was there for that, and so was Representative Barowski. And then later in the year, we capped off our 50th anniversary with a celebration at TECA, and there were speeches and proclamations, and it was just a big celebration. But that's not all we did in 2024. You'll remember, maybe last year about this time, when I came in to talk about the Library Week, I introduced our new logo, and we were able to use that in all the promotions for our 50th last year. We also had a record-breaking visitor count, especially in July. We saw over 7,500 people visit the library. But all summer, it was a pretty, all the numbers were high for visitors, which was great. Also, you know from my reports every month, our circulation has been record-breaking consistently every year. This year, we broke 2023's record by 12% with almost 175,000 items checked out. And this month or this year is looking really good to repeat that again. I'm hoping to see another record broken. Again, in 2024, we had some signature events like our kickoff for summer reading, which was a glow party, and the cops had to come and tell them to be quiet. It was so much fun. But there also was a family Fortnite. There was a disco dance party for the kids. And the adults also, we included this year or last year, some author programs in the fall that were very well-attended. And again, in 2024, we reached out into the community like we always do and spent time at the farmer's market and at the train museum and various other places throughout the community to share what the library has to offer. Our board also worked on a strategic plan this year or last year, and they put that together via a community survey that they had online. And with the responses, they were able to see that we need to focus on growth in programming and in outreach and in innovation. But all of that comes with some challenges, of course. We have space limitations. I think Mr. Neese could agree with me that it's hard sometimes to find a place to do a program or to do a meeting because we're all so busy in space. It's hard to find storage space. It's hard to find workroom space. It's just space. This is difficult, challenging. We also have limited staffing and budget versus an increasing demand for services. And so we need to balance innovation with sustainability. Can we keep doing this the way we are? So looking ahead to 2025, we will continue to offer more programs and more events and strengthen our partnerships with the community and with you, the township. And of course, we're looking forward to National Library Week, which is April 6th to the 12th. If you want to celebrate with us, come to the library. So thank you again for your support and funding. I invite you to come to the library, do a tour, or come to one of our events. We will have an event this Wednesday at 7:00 with Dr. Joe Vander Veer. It's the second part of our Community Voices series. He's a Dunwoy Village resident surgeon who's retired, and he's going to share stories from his memoir of his life in medicine. So I hope you can make it to that. You know, we're really proud at the library to serve all the residents of Newtown Township, and the plan is to keep doing that for many years to come. Thanks again for your support.
Arlene, thank you. And I think, you know, you kind of alluded to it. When you look at your reports, what you see consistently is record circulation or record participation or record attendance, patronage, you know, in the library. Month after month, it might be a slight decrease, right? Well, not month after month. There might be an anomaly of a month of a slight decrease, but it's still an increase to where we were a year prior, and that's consistent through all of your reports that you've issued over the last couple of years. And I think that this board knows that it's because of your leadership and your staff putting together and organizing a library of such a high caliber, not just a high caliber that we expect here in Newtown Township, but one that really aligns in the mission statement of being a preeminent entity here in the township. This board is proud to support the library. We look forward to continuing to partner with you and your staff and your team, and we thank you for the leadership that you have shown over the last years to make that really a formidable library, not just here in Newtown Township, but in the county and the Commonwealth. So thank you for that. Supervisor Roberts-Laycap, I believe you have a resolution.
I'd like to consider approving Resolution 25, 2025-11, recognizing National Library Week with a theme drawn to the library. Resolution 2020, 2025-11, Drawn to the Library, National Library Week, April 4th to 12th, 2025. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, freedom of ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or social economic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equality of access for all. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnership. Whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic viability of communities by providing internet and technology access, literally literal literary skills and support for job seekers, small business, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding civic engagement and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocate across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, it would be resolved that Newtown Township joins the nation celebrating the week of April 4th to 12th, 2025 as National Library Week with the 2025 theme Drawn to the Library. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the Newtown Public Library to explore the wealth of resources available. Adopted this 24th day of March 2025, and that's my motion.
Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts-Laycap, seconded by Supervisor Channell. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, and we'll have you come up and grab the resolution.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that Annie Lepley from Delaware County Libraries is here tonight to celebrate with us, and she's the director there. So she's been really supportive of the library as well, so many of our events. So glad you came.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize. I didn't know your name, Annie. I just knew you were the big shot in the room, so I wanted to make sure you're up here. All right. Thank you very much. All right, 9.3, presentation from Gather in the Circle. Miss Hilliard. Ter Hilliard. Madame Presidente. There you go.
Never say never.
Yeah, that's great. All right. Thank you very much for having us tonight. I am the president of the Newtown Square Business Association, and Paul Felison is the vice president. This is my second, I'm going into my second year. The last time we had the Circle at Sundown event, I was the vice president. We took a brief hiatus, but due to popular demand and a lot of requests from area residents, we would love to bring it back to Newtown Square and bring this event to you in partnership with Newtown Township. We have provided for you some information as far as what we've been planning so far. Paul and I had agreed after the last one that it was a great event, but we put a lot of work into this, and we were only going to do it if we had a really good team of volunteers with us, and we built a great committee. So we have some fantastic momentum with this event, and we are really looking forward to bringing it back and possibly making it an annual event in St. Alvin Circle, which is all locally-owned, small businesses, no chains, which makes it even more special that we could have it in this place. So we have a rough map for you as far as where things would be placed, and we fortunately had the opportunity to meet with township officials and some folks from the Police Department, the Fire Department, Public Works, to really hash out a lot of logistics ahead of time. So thank you, Steve, for spearheading that. We were able to put together a nice diagram for you. We also have a rundown of what's currently being done, and we've really made a lot of progress with setting up vendors, food trucks. A lot of these people you see here are local to our community. We have a lot of entertainment. We have a band lined up, which is a very popular band. We have kids' activities. We have food trucks and vendors. All of the local businesses in St. Alvin Circle are looking forward to participating this time and really opening up their businesses as well. We have a lot of our community groups, which is really important, who are going to be joining us, like the library and EAC and Birdtown, the Fourth of July Parade Committee. We've had mainline health, ambulance services volunteer to have an ambulance on site for the kids to explore, and the fire company. So looking to make this a great community event. Because we are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), we decided this year to solicit sponsorships to help offset the cost. Right now, the Newtown Square Business Association just relies on membership dues to pay for things. So we put it out to the community and said, "Would you like to sponsor?" And for sponsorships, they get special shout-outs on social media and other great things at the event. We have so far secured $4,100 in sponsorships. We have $200 in vendor fees collected, so we have money to help support these extra activities that are here. So if you just take a look down, you'll see that a lot of your local businesses in Newtown Square are supporting this endeavor. And then we have, so you'll see the sponsorship opportunity sheet there too, so that's what businesses are receiving and our current list of sponsors. We are following the guidelines by the Delaware County Health Department, and we are providing certificates of insurance. We're providing porta-potties, handwashing stations. We can add more if necessary. We're providing a hydration station, as was suggested by the township, for volunteers and for the public if needed. We will have volunteers on hand. We will only be permitting 10x10 canopy tents, open on all four sides, that we don't run into any other liabilities. So we're really working with the township in conjunction with everybody to make sure that we run this event seamlessly. SEPTA has been informed, Paul did confirm, and they are rerouting their buses for that evening. We are not doing a solid rain date for the event. If we need to reschedule, we will perhaps revisit for the fall. But once we get into rain dates, it just becomes an issue with graduations, and you know, it's a really busy time of year for everyone. Political candidates and parties will not be permitted to set up vendor tables, so we're just going to make that a general rule. And like I said, we are 100% voluntary. And like I said, we are 100% volunteer organization, so we really ask that we work in conjunction with the township for providing services. Paul, would you like to?
So, the ask. Paul Sullingson, 4727, Westchester Pike, actually 4727 Mill Hollow Lane. The ask is, and we understand that there's a huge amount of lift that we're asking from the township in manner of public works effort, in the manner of the police, and the fire department, and barricades, and closing, and reopening. And we know that there's a lot of payroll that's involved, and there's also fees, and we'd love to have a waiver of the fees, and we'd like the township to contribute the payroll for the various committees and agencies that have to contribute to make this possible. So, that's the ask.
Includes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Sheila. I'll turn it over. The board wants to say anything, and I'll turn it to Steve.
Well, I just want to say, being involved in the initial Gather in the Circle, it was a really great event, and all the volunteers and the business association, you all did such a great job with it. So, and it was really very community-oriented, and the people were, I know that our neighbors were very happy. We're happy that you guys are bringing this back again. Really appreciate it. And I think we just, I'll let Steve talk about, you know, the time and the cost. I think you'll have to, I mean, we have to kind of keep that, I'm just speaking for myself, I think we just need to figure out what that looks like, because, you know, it can't be George's guys at 100 hours overtime. Although I know one student who would volunteer to do that. Yeah. Volunteer. So, I'll let Steve just talk about how that looks. But, thank you guys again for bringing this. It really is a great event.
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I'll reiterate what Supervisor Roberts like I said. I mean, I think that this is something that, you said it perfectly at the beginning of this, Sheila, this is something that the community has been asking about repetitively since it initially went back in, was that '21, '22? Was it '22? Yeah. So, you know, I think it's great. So, you know, I have, I personally have no issues with this whatsoever, but I don't know, like I said, I wanted to turn, I don't know if there's any, you wanted to add to anything or?
Yeah, I think just so that it's clear what, but I think, we haven't finalized exactly everything that we're going to be providing, but having had the conversations with our staff, we're looking probably at two or three police officers. Part of that will be dependent upon how many of the fire police can attend, because depending on how many are there, we'll determine how many more officers we need to help take care of. But, we'll for sure have at least two, potentially three on the police side. Public works side, and we think that's about four hours, just that window that we would be looking at the police. The public works side, I think we're probably looking at during the event, probably having three public works guys there as well because of trash and things like that. And then, leading up to the event, there'll be some hours hoping to move potentially some of the furniture and things like that. I don't know that all of that's been 100% set, and they'll be helping to make sure that the barricades are in place and all of those kind of things. I think that there, we're probably looking at about six hours, maybe even seven hours of public works time that day, and probably per person. And then, on the days leading up, we're probably looking, you know, maybe potentially another five hours per person, depending on how many we need moving furniture and things like that. And that, we haven't nailed down, and that's the piece that's still kind of standing out there. Did a real quick numbers, we're probably talking somewhere between $4,000 and $7,000 in cost of personnel from the township at this point. So, that's kind of where we are at this moment. That may grow a little bit, but that's kind of in line, just so you know, with what we have invested in this event in the past. And, you know, as a staff, we think this is a great event for our community as well.
Yeah. So, you need the, you want to, you want to wait until you get?
Yeah, we're going to officially, I'm going to put it on the first meeting in April, just as long as I know the board's in general agreement, that's the direction we're headed. We'll finalize everything, and then we'll get you the list of all the fees that you're waiving, so that you can do that publicly.
Yeah. Is the board fine with that?
Yes.
The only other thing I'll add to is, I appreciate the fact that you have had these conversations early on with township, making sure, obviously, you guys get this, a lot more moving parts than what individuals think. And since there is tax dollars associated with it, we appreciate the fact that we're able to have these conversations ahead of time, because some people aren't as generous with their time as we would like them to be. So, thank you for that. Appreciate it. So, you will be on the agenda in a week, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Well, I think it's three, actually.
Doesn't sound like you should have any issues.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move down to Section 10, Reports. Report from the Police Department, Chief Lund. Do you have anything to supplement to your report? Thank you very much. 10.2, Report from the Fire Chief, Chief Young. Do you have anything to supplement to your report? Thank you very much. 10.3, Report from the Public Works Director, Mr. Sharretts. Anything to supplement? Can I just say that the field looks amazing? Papermill House looks amazing, and I know that we're talking about looking at the bridge, but I was talking to a member of the Historical Society today, and they were gushing over the fact of how they both look. So, another investment that this township has made, that this township's made with regards to historic resources and structure, so we appreciate that. 10.4, Report from the Codes Department, Mr. Rezcheck. Anything to supplement to your report?
Nothing to add.
Thank you very much, sir. 10.5, Report from the Finance Department, Director Barbean. Do you have anything to supplement?
Tom, you're muted.
Tom, you're muted if you are adding anything.
I'm going to take that silence as that there is nothing to supplement. 10.6, Report from the Library. Director Caruso, anything else to add? Thank you very much. Report from Township Engineer. I must call you Mr. Panoni, Mr. Johnson.
Close enough. So, kind of just going off a discussion there, to just highlight some of the projects that township recently has completed with our capital expenditures. Papermill House has one punchless item left, and the Cedar Shake and the reconstruction of the chimney is now complete. As you were mentioning, it turned out to be very well waterproof, that building for the foreseeable future. The municipal building complex here, which was the new green metal roof, is almost done, as well as the public works garage, and then rebuilding the lean-to and the public works garage is all nearing completion. So, the lean-to structure that's next to the garage that they keep, I guess it's the salt shed, basically, they had to tear it down and rebuild it. So, that project is now all complete, and the disruption around the building should be wrapping up. And then, as far as our various stormwater projects, the Waters Edge community, we have had a pretty substantial project to divert flooding from the rear end of this house is coming into a complete, successful completion now.
Any questions for the Township Engineer? Okay, great. Now, we'll move down to the Township Manager, Mr. Neese.
Yes, so, you were mentioning the field and back, and so, there'll be a couple other things on the agenda tonight related to that, and so, we'll talk about that when we get there. But, one of the things that I want you to be aware of is, George's team has been looking specifically at what happens when we get the field done, and there's that stone path that goes behind the field. There's also a stone path that goes along the side of the field and in between the public works building and the field. And what we've found is, a lot of that stone has ended up on the turf field, and after spending all this money on the turf field, we don't want that stone getting into that. And so, George's team come, as soon as they're done with the, getting the field finished, is going to come right back behind that, complete the trail on both sections, so that it's all the way through, and actually come down and put McAdam down to make sure the stones aren't going onto the field, make sure that's really a solid piece, connecting that, and then also connecting the trail that goes to where the bathrooms are, connect that all the way back to the trail that's there. So, it's going to make a nice connection. George also has gotten some new signs or had them refurbished, so they're ready to go up as soon as the trail, as soon as that park is open again. So, I'm really, we're going to have a really great opportunity to really have a big win for the township, and I just thank the board so much for the investment that you've made there, because I think it really does make a big difference in our community.
Steve, I think everybody here agrees with that. Like I said, when you drive by, it looks great. I've been getting stopped. George and I have had this conversation. People are constantly stopping, talking about how excited they are. Both people who have young kids that play on that, people who used to just run around on it for exercise. I mean, it's a huge, that, and then also the refurbishing of the basketball court. I mean, that whole entire area right now, from a sports health complex perspective, looks great. One question I did have, and maybe this is a conversation to have during budget season, but since we're talking about the paving around the trail of Gable Field, I don't know, I mean, I feel like we should start having conversations, just getting ideas of what the costs would be, but about paving all the trails that we have in the township. And I could be completely wrong on this, but my perspective, my thought of it is, like, you look at the Goshen Trail, I mean, that washes out every once in a while. I know that we've patched areas where we are experiencing the most of the washout, but I would think that over time, the paving would pay itself off over the cost of constantly sending George's guys out there to fill it back in and other things like that. But, I would just, my own, you know, since we're talking about paving just that area, I would say that that's something that we should, again, just speaking of myself, something to look at for the rest of the trail network, maybe not doing it all at one shot, but starting to look at something where, you know, it's more of a paved thing than anything else. And I know, I know that you and I have had a conversation before, and you said that individuals come from all over the place, because it's all around the joints and everything. And I can respect that, but at the same time, but at the same time, I think it's worth just having the conversation and investigating it.
Yeah, and I totally agree with you. You know, from a maintenance standpoint, I think George and I would say, let's get it all buttoned up, because if we have it buttoned up like that, we're not going back and having washouts typically, and it does make a big difference. His team spends a lot of time doing that, and then you get the purists who like to run on the stone trails, and so, it's that balance.
No, I get it.
And, but, you know, I do think the fact that, you know, we don't intend to ever pave the trail at the meadows, so there would be a really great place for those who want that experience to be able to go and do that. So, it's not, I think there's some places that it really makes sense.
Yeah.
And right back here is one of those, and I think Goshen Trail is one of those. We've kind of talked, and we keep adding, but it would be nice to tackle it as a major project.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I think that we don't need any more asphalt in grassy meadowlands. So, I think that everybody would agree with you on that sense of not putting it into the meadow preserve, but I also would think that a runner, or a jogger, or a walker would prefer to have a nice paved, safe, flat surface as opposed to, not saying that's not safe, but as opposed to one that might have just washed out the night before and has divots and everything else associated with it. But, we can have that conversation when the time arises, but I think it's something that we should look at.
We will put that in a hoppers, things to consider for future capital projects.
Perfect. Any questions for Mr. Neese? Moving down to Payments, Section 11, 11.1. Can I get a motion approving the certificate of payment request number four totaling $140,089.12 for Garland DBS Incorporated, associated with the municipal complex roof project, as approved by the Township Engineer, leaving a remaining balance of $198,912.22. Motion is made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. I cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. 11.2, Can I get a motion approving the certificate of payment request number two totaling $25,326.25 for Miller Soil Solutions LLC, associated with the Waters Edge Stormwater Improvement Project, as approved by the Township Engineer, leaving a remaining balance of Motion is made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. I cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 11.3, Can I get a motion approving the following Township escrow account releases that have been approved by our third-party professionals for completed work? 111 Hunt Club Lane for $112.50. 503 Twin Creek Lane for $402. 68 Langolin Lane for $119.75. 150 Richfield Road for $598. 140 Beechwood Road for $1,322. Motion is made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. I cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Section 12, Bills, 12.1. I've reviewed the bills, and I'll make a motion approving the bills on check register A dated March 24, 2025 totaling $489,581.97. Motion is made by the Chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Section 13, New Business, 13.1. Can I get a motion approving placing an ad in the 2025 Newtown Square Historical Society Program Book, Tales of Newtown Square, at a cost of $400? Motion is made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. I cap. Is there any board comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 13.2, Can I get a motion accepting the resignation of Mike Knoll, effective March 28, 2025? Motion is made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. I cap. Is there any board discussion? I'd like to say thank you to Mike for his years of service. He was here, what, how many years?
Just probably about 10 and a half.
Yeah, that's what I thought. For 10 years of service in Newtown. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 13.3, Can I get a motion accepting the quote from Dallas Data for accounts payable support at a cost of $4,000 per month? Motion is made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. I cap. Mr. Neese?
Yes, so, with Mike resigning, Tom and I met, and we started talking about, like, what's the best way going forward? Obviously, we think somebody replacing him at some point is the best answer, but as we're, as, you know, Tom's here, and he's still trying to grasp everything that's in the finance department and everything that's going on, I thought it would be beneficial for him to have a little bit of a time period where we could get the work done without him having to select the person that would come in, because there may be a little bit further down. He may come back and say, hey, now that we've understand this, let's hire somebody that can do these skills. And so, that was the recommendation that he and I are giving. Dallas, we met with Dallas Data. Dallas Data is our software company, but they also do this work, helping out communities. What we found is that there's some updates to the software that we haven't rolled out here at the township that are available to us, and they'll help us roll those out, which should provide some efficiencies in that area as well. So, I think there's a double benefit. It gives us some time to really look at what we need to do, and secondly, it provides the efficiency, hopefully increased efficiencies in that department, so when we do hire somebody, we're better off in understanding what we need.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, 13.4, we could probably just skip this one. Let's, can I get a motion accepting the retirement of Suzanne Valan, effective May 2, 2025? begrudgingly, that motion was made and seconded. It was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. Is there any board discussion? Well, there's a lot that we can say here, and we will do that in due course, so we'll save it for when the official time comes, but I'll just add that this board wants to thank Suzanne, and again, there'll be more said as it gets closer to May 2, but for her years of service to this township as a resident, but more importantly, in her roles that she's had here in the township, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I think it was, I think that failed. That's a shame. That's a shame for Suzanne. Motion carries. 13.5, Can I get a motion approving the hiring of Mary Wells as a Human Resources Director and Sustainability Coordinator at an annual salary of $82,550 contingent on passing all required background checks? Motion is made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. I cap. Is there any board discussion? Is there any student to say anything?
Yeah, I just would say, you know, if you're in the public, you may say, how did you get somebody so quickly? And I just wanted to give a little bit of a background. When we were out last year, and we had gone out looking for some positions, Mary had actually applied for one of the positions last year, and we said, boy, she would be a great HR person if we ever needed one, not knowing that we would be six months later having this conversation. And And so Suzanne and I went back through, we looked at a couple of the applicants that had HR background. Mary was definitely interested. She came in, she interviewed with Suzanne and I, she also interviewed with me, and then we brought her in and let her meet with the entire director, staff level, and I felt like they all felt that she was a good ad as well. Mary has over 30-plus years of experience in HR, so I think we're getting a benefit in that, that we're coming forward. So yes, she'll have to learn how we do things here, and she'll have to learn some things about local government, but the basic understanding of HR she'll be bringing with her, and so that's a real benefit to the township. So I think that she will be able to be up and running fairly quickly and helping us in an area that will need a lot of help with losing Suzanne, who's had a lot of experience with us.
Any comments from the board? The only thing I'll say is that the board did interview and meet with Mary. She's here this evening, but we will get this motion officially adopted, and then, Mary, I'll give you the opportunity to introduce yourself to the public. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to you, and I will give you the opportunity to come to the podium and introduce yourself to the public. There is a button.
Just make sure it's green.
Well, thank you for having me here. It's been such a pleasure to meet everybody, as Steve and I did meet last year with Suzanne. I'm so excited to get to work with her as she leaves, so I'm going to spend every possible minute that I can with her to try to find out as much as I can. Fun fact, I told them when I was in my college years on breaks, I used to work up at the Circle at Vivian Chevrolet. So I have a lot of experience here at Newtown Square, family lives here, and I hope to bring a lot of my resources and my experience to the team here. I believe that HR is a service provider, and our department is of service to all employees. So I take our role very seriously, and I have to be a big asset to the township. And I really appreciate the welcome that I got, and meeting everybody, they've been wonderful.
Awesome, and something that a lot of people in this town would like is the fact that you received your master's in human resources from Villanova, so.
Yes.
It's not Westchester, but we'll let you go, you know what I mean? It is what it is.
Little background with that, and I also have a PHR from the Society of Human Resources.
Perfect. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Now we'll move down to 13.6, Consider approving the advertisement of 307 Earl's Lane as a Class II historical resource.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Chandler, seconded by Supervisor Robert's like cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 13.7, Consider approving the application by the Environmental Advisory Council for a $500 DCED grant for additional plant plugs for the rain gardens.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Chandler, seconded by Supervisor Robert's like cap. Mr. Neese?
Yes, as typical, when you go for any grant, you always need board support, and that's the reason why this is before you tonight, but more importantly, our Environmental Advisory Committee has really done a great job over the years taking care of the two rain gardens, one just outside the door here, in front of the police station, and then up on the hill at the Newtown Little League. And I just would say, we're very fortunate that we have those rain gardens as an example for people to follow, and so as time goes on, sometimes they need some refreshing of the plantings, and so that's what this would be for, and this grant for $500 would help us get those plantings that we would need to refresh the rain garden. I was trying to talk long enough so you can get back to your seat.
You did well, thank you. I had to go talk to our solicitor. Okay, with that explanation, any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Section 14, we've done already. Section 15, Resolutions of Legislation in Action. 15.1, Consider approving Resolution Number 2025-12, authorizing an application to the Delaware County Council for an allocation of county liquid fuels tax funds in 2025 for the Newtown Township 2025 road program. Supervisor Chandler.
Resolution Number 2025-12, whereas the undersigned municipality desires to take advantage of the act approved June 1, 1945, PP 1242, and as provided in the act approved May 18, 1945 PL 803, permitting counties of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to appropriate and expend monies for the improvements and maintenance of state highways and state aid highways or public highway in any county of the Commonwealth. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the officials of Newtown Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, in regular session assembled on this 24th day of March 2025, to hereby make an application to the County Council of Delaware County for the 2025 allocation of county liquid fuel tax funds in the amount of $13,331 to be used toward Newtown Township 2025 road repaving program. It is certified by the municipality and the officers who execute this application, that materials used to work, used and work done hereunder shall conform to the current Pennsylvania Department of Transportation specifications, or specifications approved by the department, and that all work will be done within the legal right of way or with permission of the abutting property owners. Adopted this 24th day of March 2025. My motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Chandler, seconded by Supervisor Robert's like cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Section 16, Ordinance, 16.1. Consider approving the advertisement of ordinance 2025-01, an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of Newtown, Chapter 112 Parks and Recreation Areas by deleting the existing Chapter 112 and replacing it with a new Chapter 112, adding a definition section clarifying and adding certain restrictions and regulations in township parks or recreation areas, and adding language to the violations and penalties section.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Chandler, seconded by Supervisor Robert's like cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now move down to Section 17, which is board comment. The only board comment that I have is, the only comment that I have is, if everybody remembers, a few months ago, talked about the effective date of ordinances. It's something that we encountered here in Newtown Township. Spoke to our state representative who introduced legislation known as House Bill 209 back in February. Supervisor, Supervisor San Francisco and I went up to Harrisburg. I had the opportunity to testify before the House Local Government Committee, made it out of committee. It'll now be voted on by the full house for the second reading tomorrow. If it goes, and then it needs, if it comes out of that with no issues and no amendments, then it goes for a third and final consideration, and then it goes over to the Senate, and we start the whole process over again. What this does again is that in the second-class township code, the ordinance section regarding municipal ordinances states explicitly that ordinances do not come effective until five days after they are adopted by the Board of Supervisors. But it's inconsistent to what is in the first-class township and in the borough codes. I thought it was a little arcane, a little ridiculous, so instead of just complaining about it, I did what the Constitution and our founders thought, which is reaching out to our elected officials, and so she introduced legislation. It is supported by PSATs, which is, you know, important, and so this will allow us to, if signed into law, have ordinances become effective the day that the Board of Supervisors adopts them, which, again, would make it consistent to what we have in the first-class township with the Board of Commissioners and the Borough Code with the councils and the mayor. So more to come on that. Hopefully, I report at the next time that it was read tomorrow, and then final passage on Tuesday, but we shall see. Tomorrow's the big test. Section 18, Public Comment. Is there any members of the public who wish to provide any public comment? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I thought you were going up. Yeah, well, you moved your hand, I thought you were going. All right, with that being said, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.